Good morning, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Acheson County Commission meeting for Tuesday, October twenty ninth. Like to call the meeting to order. If you please stand and join Mr. Formos for our invitation.
As I come to pray with you this morning, I want to read some verses from Psalm one hundred and twelve that emphasize how important righteousness is. The word of the Lord says, praise the Lord, blessed is the man who fears the Lord, who greatly delights in his commandments. For the righteous shall never be moved, he shall be remembered forever. He is not afraid of bad news, his heart is firm, trust into the Lord. His heart is steady, he will not be afraid. Until he looks in triumph on his adversaries. He is distributed freely, he is given to the poor. His righteousness endures forever, his horn is exalted in honor. Pray with me, please. Father, thank you that you call these folks together to be the leaders in our county. I pray, Father, for your wisdom for them. I pray that they will pursue you with righteousness. I pray that they will be faithful ministers to perform the role to which you called them. Give them both compassion and patience as they work through the matters of leading our county. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Formos. Public comment? Seeing none? Approval of the minutes, we have two sets of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, October eighth, twenty twenty four?
So move, say it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. And then I have a second set from Tuesday, October twenty second, twenty twenty four, do I have a motion to approve?
So move, say it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Mr. Comments? Mr. Reeves?
Oh, I've got nothing for great for today.
Okay, Commissioner Arnold?
Okay, I think at our last meeting, I had said that Christina Ruimann from the Multi-County Health Department had resigned, though we've worked out her differences and she is staying, so we won't be looking for a new.
Oh, that's great news.
Yeah.
So I do February seventh.
Yeah.
So Friday, about four thirty, my wife and I were a little bored, we decided to come down and vote. And we were, she was nine hundred and eighty-one. Advanced votes. We're just like way over where it's ever been, another week to go, so get out and vote, apparently people are doing it. So, pretty excited.
Awesome.
Oh, I had one more thing.
Yeah.
Doctor Fast has been on our Multi-County Health Board and he has resigned, so we'll have to do a search, another letters of interest for that position, so that'll be upcoming. The clerk will put it out at some point. I want to make sure which position because we have one position's commissioner, one position's at large, and one's a medical professional. We actually have two medical professionals on and one is doing, so I want to make sure I've know which position, I believe he's the medical representative, so I'll get with the clerk and have her get that out on the county website.
Okay. I have one thing to acknowledge today. Jack Ferris is in our GIS department and he attended the Kansas Association of Mappers Conference this year and he received a certificate of achievement. This acknowledges that Jack Ferris has been awarded second place in the Digital Masterpiece K A M Map Gallery. So just wanted to acknowledge him and say congratulations and thanks to Jack for everything he does for us here at the county. All right, so that's all I have. New business, I do have a purchase order that I was like to call for a motion for approval. This is for Roden Bridge. For the Miami County Cutting Edge Trade for two cat motor grader extensions in the amount of four thousand seven hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty cents out of special machinery. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move, say it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three to zero. And we have extensions that we're running now, these will just be in addition to to get all extensions on all of our graders. Hey, I got it, in oh five, Brian Oswald, Facilities and Maintenance Director, Jail Air Conditioner Discussion.
So I've got out of eleven, we sent off for eleven. Quotes, we got back three. Three from they're all qualified to do the job, but I got three quotes, I think I emailed them to you. Do you have them, so we had design done and aim. And Dan came in at the lowest quote on that.
Can you, can you read all three of them, and this is to replace the train unit over there with the exact same unit?
Yeah. So on design. Where is really total? Here. I'm not finding their total.
I think it might be on the second page.
Second page. If you decked, they are worse, the total though.
So maybe on the bottom of the front page and then the dusting's twelve thousand.
Okay, yeah. You're not finding the total though. On designs one. They're not bringing the right.
Oh, sorry, hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and nine, I think it's just stated.
Read it, okay.
One hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. And then, there's some D's.
And then Aim came in at one sixty-nine, five. One hundred and sixty-nine, five. And then they meant one sixty-seven, fifty-two. And they're all the same units, they're all forty-ten trainings.
Do you have a recommendation or do you want to come back to?
Yeah.
The recommendation.
Well, no, it's the same unit, but those are different design features.
No, it's a replay, take out and replace.
Okay.
So this is all the same, same quote, same bid, same word.
Okay.
Same workmanship. I believe that they're all three capable, so I would say you move on with them.
Okay. And then we will work with Finance Director to figure out. And make a motion when we're ready to figure out where we're going to pay for that.
Good.
Okay. May I put those in the folder, please?
You should. And I restaple that one.
Yeah.
Let me, I'll just give you this one and then. I should reset.
This has all three of them?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, yep, I'll just stick it in.
Well, they're just stapled by.
Okay, next. Mark Siltner, Finance Director. Sorry, I know you're taking notes too.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-five insurance RFP selection on winning bid and the purchase order approval for the Sheriff Patrol Vehicles Outfit.
Yeah, so we have the two bids for K Camp and Midwest Public Risk. Did you have any other questions, or do you want to go ahead and select your higher for twenty twenty-five?
Oh, yeah, we we reviewed this last week when you were gone, Alan, and the recommendation was K Camp because they were less, but we wanted to wait until you were here, if you had any questions.
No, yeah, I'm fine with that, yep, yep. I don't think I have any questions.
Okay. Do you have that amount, do you want me to make a motion?
Yeah, the amount is two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven seventy-four.
Alright, so I look for a motion to approve K Camp for the twenty twenty-five insurance in the amount of two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, so I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
The next item is a purchase order to nine one one custom. This is for the two sheriff patrol vehicles being outfitted with the equipment. The invoices are attached back here. The cars just went down a little while ago. I don't know, last week, couple weeks, I don't remember what Jack told me, but this we've had all the ARPA funds from what we kind of went through on how we were going to spend the money, so.
Okay, so I look for a motion to approve this purchase order as allocated previously in our ARPA discussions to outfit two sheriff patrol vehicles with equipment in the amount of thirty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents to be paid to nine one one custom out of the ARPA fund.
That's total for two cars.
Yes, each one is sixteen thousand, five sixty-seven, nineteen. Have a motion to approve.
Absolutely.
Say it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 That's amazing.
Should have had them sign when he was here.
He's behalf of them.
I did have one other thing that didn't make it on.
Okay.
This next purchase order is to the Lloyd Group for payment for 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 consulting services of the final progress billing. They were the consultant that helped us expense and give guidance for the ARPA dollars. The total is eighty-two thousand, eight hundred. The agreed upon amount, total payable to them was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars even. And we've had three invoices, so the remaining balance is that eighty-two, eight.
Look for a motion to approve the purchase order as presented by our Finance Director out of ARPA to Lloyd Group in the amount of eighty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So move, second that question. You good?
Yep.
So Mark. Something gets heavily loaded on the back end, it was hundred and twenty, eighty at the end, so is that the way it was set up, or?
Well, we're at the end of our
deal. When the contract starts, it's been like a two-year thing?
It started in twenty-one.
Or twenty-one, it's a certain year. I guess it's more working at the end, I guess.
Yeah, that's that's also true. I, there was not an agreement on paid set terms.
Interesting, so they're going to be kind of set scheduled.
But, yeah, now that, I guess, since we haven't been paying, or we haven't had an invoice, now we're at the end of it and our term is out, now we're just paying all of that, I guess.
That's why I'm just curious why it was timed that way.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda was Catherine Sparks, Community Corrections Director with the Juvenile Services Discussion. This has been postponed to November nineteenth. And Cory is going to be here at ten fifty-five. So I'm going to pass Cory and just keep going if you guys are good with that, because we have the information. So Cory had sent us his Acheson County EMS Monthly Commission Report for September twenty twenty-four showing his transports and his call volumes. So if you guys have that, I would look for a motion to receive and file.
So moved. Seven.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Okay, next is a proclamation. We're proclamation for the Operation Green Light for Veterans and Their Families. I will read that and also note that our Maintenance Director will be turning the courthouse light atop green to, yes, to support this as well. Supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans Proclamation. Whereas the residents of Acheson County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces, and whereas the contributions and sacrifices of men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Acheson County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community and the American Legion, the veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in twenty-nine states to help fellow former service members access more than fifty-two billion in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually. And whereas an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four to seventy-two percent of the service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life. And whereas active military service members transitioning from military service are at a high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans, and whereas the Acheson County appreciates the sacrifice of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. Now, therefore, be it resolved with designation as a Green Light for Veterans, Acheson County hereby declares from November first of twenty twenty-four through Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-four, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our men and women in uniform transitioning from active service. Therefore, be it further resolved that in observance of the Operation Green Light, Acheson County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all of those who made an immeasurable sacrifice to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence from November fourth through November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. I would call for a motion to adopt and approve this by the Board of County Commissioners, Acheson County, Kansas, this first day of, as of the first day of November, twenty twenty-four.
So moved, say it.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes three.
Yes.
Okay. No, you're good, I was just wondering if I need to wait for her to pour.
This is the letter of support that they asked the commission to do each year, so it's essentially the same letter as twenty-three. Stephanie said that it was worded just fine and didn't want to change it up. It's for A dot funding for their
Anyone, veterans groups take that proclamation anywhere, is it?
I don't.
Legion or, no, I'm just curious.
I'm trying to find out for you.
Absolutely.
Jody created it from Naco or KAC.
Yeah.
That, and shared it with us, so.
So it's effective organizations like to have that.
Yes.
And the Youngs is, provides a lot of support to the veterans, and so I know they would want to know or do something.
Okay.
Yeah.
You'll have Michelle send something out to you?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I have Stephanie Barnes has submitted a a letter of support for K dot funding for us for Project Concern. So this is a letter drafted to Stephanie, who is the Director of Project Concern. The Acheson County Board of Commissioners fully supports the application of Project Concern Incorporated to the Kansas Department of Transportation for operating expenses to help support the transportation program in the city and county of Acheson. Congress at Meals and Meals on Wheels for the homebound provide to many of the citizens of Acheson and those at the Effingham site are essential for the physical and mental health of our senior citizens. The transportation service is necessary in this area because it is the only service available to our community that provides regular transportation for elderly, handicapped, and others at a minimum cost. Acheson County supports Project Concern and has appropriated to them the sum of one hundred and twenty-five thousand in twenty twenty-four. By the motion for the Chair to sign this letter.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero.
Thank you. I did email Cory to let him know if he could come anytime.
Okay.
But I don't have his phone number.
Okay.
Give me a text. Yeah, you can text him.
Please, sure.
Okay, so Finance Director sent us an update on ARPA on Wednesday, the twenty-third, and the next thing on the agenda is ARPA update, so the jail graphic panel is under contract. So doesn't need to be paid immediately. Land acquisition, do we have any update on?
Yes.
That.
Alright, the city and A A E D C, they have there's a right of first refusal that was granted many years ago, and they're they, they have asked for a second addendum to real estate purchase and sale agreement. The only change from the earlier draft is paragraph four. And it is a modification of the waiver of right of refusal, it says the reference to the entire tract of land described above in paragraph one should be modified to read the entire tract of land described above in paragraph one, except fifteen acres there. And that was the language that was suggested by 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 Mr. Mears on behalf of A A E D C. The intention of which I think is to make clear that A A E D C will retain the right of first refusal to property that is not being purchased. And so there is a proposed addendum for your signature.
And as far as closing, any updates on?
That's the one thing we need before closing can be said.
Okay, so maybe next week we should have an update?
Yeah. For sure, we should have a date, right?
Okay. Perfect.
So we need to approve this today?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I would look for a motion to allow the Chair to sign the addendum to real estate purchase and sale agreement as presented by our County Counselor. I have a motion to approve.
So move, say it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. You what?
I had a bad phone number.
Oh.
It's bad.
Okay, so moving along, we got an update on land acquisition. Courthouse renovations, we are still around forty-three thousand on that one.
That's actually changed a little bit since I sent you that email.
Okay.
There have been other invoices that come in such as the J and L drywall, Carrigan lumber, some other water line supplies.
So what we signed today will be deducted off.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, I saw those in there, yep. Okay, so, and then I have a note here to verify with Cory when he's with us about the the next one.
That's the band.
Um, the, yep, and then the patrol cars, we just followed up with that, and then we are working on the AC unit, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Interesting message, dude.
Any unfinished business that we have? You guys have any unfinished business?
No.
Bless you.
We have a time to get a little boring.
So do you have it?
I just sent him a text.
Oh, did you, okay.
But I was trying to make sure I had this in. Oh, he's walking in now.
Oh, great. Yeah, I think it brought up his work number and drive the text or something, it was like, why do that? That part of the meetings.
So I, what, so what is the process as far as with, because you guys are both interested in District One, right? Commissioner, will you guys submit letters of interest, or how does, what is the process that you guys go through?
Well, at some point, yeah, but I have be contacted, we have to be contacted, fighting Derek, of course, there's a meeting. Tomorrow. The electors, yeah. That is the what are they called?
Precinct.
Precinct Committee people will have a convention and they will vote. So precinct committee people in that district.
And I understand that happens tomorrow evening, and anyone can submit their interest
at that meeting, and that there's no, because I haven't been told that I need to to write something up about what my qualifications are and my strong suits. And
that, that happens, that that will happen, but they they can't nominate yet because we're not passing the elections, so we have to get, no. My understanding is you got to get past the election.
See, I didn't, okay, I didn't.
That's, that's just my thought, and I don't think you can.
I don't, I don't go any more than what I thought we were meeting tomorrow.
We are.
Decide.
Yeah, I don't, I, I I would be surprised if that happened tomorrow.
Clarifications from Derek.
Yeah, I don't think the nominations happen tomorrow, but I think he has to announce
Who?
The opening, make that official. But I don't see how you can nominate somebody for quarter fifth. I mean, you're
Or a lot.
I think they're doing it tomorrow.
Okay.
A point, they got a point.
They're doing the organizational of the county commission. They're doing the organizational of the county committee as well and they do that after the primary. So they can do anytime after the primary, they can do that. And they, whereas I know I noticed both of our resignations, it's Shelley and I, so.
Right.
I think it's the convention tomorrow.
And then that's when.
My understanding.
That's when the six precinct committee people appoint your replacement.
Yes, at the courthouse.
I don't know where.
But I I agree with you. I.
I don't know, but that's great. Yeah. We'll find out. I know when I was appointed, there was people that hadn't really expressed an interest, showed up at the meeting and put their name in. So they can do that right up until that that time.
And the meeting's tomorrow in the courtroom?
At five forty five.
Okay.
Six thirty.
Is it six fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was that was that in the newspaper or I I like I didn't know about it?
Published.
Yeah, the convention is October thirty, the courthouse five forty five, that's what I got made now.
Five forty five.
Well, you'd be there five forty five.
Did you get an email?
Yeah.
Yeah, I actually got a separate notice from Derek, so. And that was too.
I got a letter.
I only got told because I'm on.
If you read the back, I believe it's. And he said he had to change it for something.
All the way to the end before I start to say.
I don't understand it, Cory.
Awesome. Thanks. I was just curious.
Yeah.
All right, so Cory is here, so we will do Cory Scott, Chief Emergency Services Rescue Truck Options for Effingham.
Uh, if the commission remembers. Back in February and March, when I took over the rescue squad, we were tying up loose ends and figuring out where all the equipment was and. And figuring out how we were gonna move forward with everything, one of the. I hate to call it an issue, but one of the areas of concern was. Who owned the rescue equipment and who owned the rescue truck in Effingham? And through that investigation, we. Through looking into that investigation is not the proper term, through looking into that, the rescue truck and about half the rescue equipment is owned by. The fire district out there, District Number Two. So that brought up other questions, who's allowed to take that truck? You know, under what protocol and procedure do they operate under whose insurance? All these issues came up, so there was. Liability, accountability and protocol questions on how it was to operate. And what we discovered through the process, there really wasn't any agreement whatsoever. It was just occurring. So we've been looking at options going forward, what's the best for the fire district, what's best for the county, what's best for the residents? To continue providing a rescue truck in that half of the county. So I met a number of different times with Chief Klepper, Kirk Klepper of the Fire District. And we put our heads together on on what looked best for both the county and the fire district and most importantly, the constituency. So we came to the conclusion that we were gonna present the fire board out there with a lease option. Thank you, Pat, for putting that together, but Pat put together a lease option, we presented that in a meeting to their board, they contemplated and ultimately decided that wasn't in their best interests. So they sent Chief Klepper and a representative of their board of their boards to have power to have another meeting with me. And they countered with that maybe the county just ought to purchase the truck and equipment and be back in the rescue business. With the county and they asked me to put numbers together, purchase that equipment and that truck. So I asked them what their thoughts were on a price, they really didn't have an idea, they'd like me to come up with it. So what I've put together is the truck's pretty easy. There's Kelly Blue Buck on the truck, I know what the truck is, I know what equipment, it's been installed on that truck, that's a pretty easy number to come up with. Kelly Blue Book on the truck is somewhere between seventeen and twenty one thousand. The truck's been outfitted with lights, sirens, extended bed, camper shell, all the things to make it a rescue truck.
That price is with equipment?
That was my question.
That was without, that's the Kelly Blue Buck truck price and then I thought about, you know. The upfitting to make it a rescue truck has some value. I guess the bigger issue in my mind is the hydraulic rescue tools, jaws of life as they're commonly called. They're functionally obsolete. They're in great shape, they've been maintained well, they're sitting in Effingham and they're already installed on that truck. But battery operated rescue tools have made gasoline powered rescue tools. Obsolete. So the question in is what is a set of tools sitting in Effingham that we know is well maintained? We know functions worth versus what they are on fair market value. Most fire rescue services that are companies that sell these type of items have similar used tools in the five to ten thousand dollar range. Initial purchase cost in twenty fourteen on those tools was a lot more than that. But the battery operated tools have just made them obsolete, so. With those things in mind, the number I came up with potentially. You know, obviously with commission approval and input is to maybe offer thirty thousand for the truck and the tools. I realize, you know, coming up with a purchase like that at the end of the budget year. Uh, finding the money, I have consulted with Mark a little bit on that, got his idea on where that money could potentially come from, the rescue. And EMS. Uh, equipment funds combined have around ninety two thousand in them. I hate to deplete that, but maybe it is the best course of action that the county. Maintain the rescue truck and the rescue tools. So thoughts, concerns, questions, where do you wanna go forward with this?
Okay, how is the? That's the relationship where then you would have two entities, you've got fire district personnel and you've got rescue personnel. Are they so intertwined anyway? It don't make a difference or?
They're large.
They're housing the equipment, they're gonna have a rescue call, people coming in and how how is that relationship and?
The relationship's good and I wanna stress that, cause that was brought to my attention, they're like, well, is the commissioner, are you upset with the service we're providing? No, that was never. And then none of you expressed that to me, I didn't express that to them. The issue at hand was is who's responsible, who's ensuring, who's allowed to take the truck? Who provides the rules? Those were the issues that got brought up. The only paperwork we ever found was where the commission at the time had turned over. The previous rescue truck and the previous rescue tools to the the fire district, but there was no. Agreement or mutual aid or memorandum of understanding who is to provide rescue service. So yes, we're largely intertwined, I'm a member of that fire department, many of my rescue squad members are members of that fire department, but not all. So then does that mean that the rescue squad members that are not fire district members, are they allowed to go get that truck? That's, well, that's a real big gray area right now. They're not insured under the fire district's insurance. So probably, and I defer to Pat, probably what would happen is if there was an unfortunate incident and a rescue squad member crashed that truck. Imagine the fire district's insurance would pay off and then cancel them. And then the fire district would probably have difficulty in finding insurance again at a reasonable rate, so we don't wanna put them in that position. And then it brings up, okay, a fire department member that's not a county employee drives that truck outside of their fire jurisdiction because they're. Largely covering areas outside of their fire jurisdiction and they create harm of some sort, like use the rescue tool and. Inadvertently harm somebody, is the county responsible because they're outside of their fire jurisdiction? So none of these things were that we can find. We can find no paperwork that these were ever addressed, so that brought up all these issues and. I guess when you open a can of worms, now I'm aware of all these issues. If we look the other way and don't do something about it, who's culpable, who's liable at this point, so. Yes, we're intertwined, but not completely, I guess is the answer to that question, so it brings up. One of the questions that got brought up is they're volunteers, they do their best, they do a great job, I have a great group of volunteers. But most of the West volunteers work out of the county or work in Atchison. So it brought up the issue, well, I have rescue squad members that are also EMS members. They get off duty in Effingham one morning, a call comes out at say eight twenty, they're still hanging out at the station having a cup of coffee. Nobody responds to take that truck to say a car accident in Muskota. Are they allowed to go get that truck? So then if we say, no, you're not allowed to get that truck, there's two qualified people. Sitting in a community with an equipped truck that aren't allowed to take it for liability reasons and they've gotta wait on a truck from Atchison to go clear to Muskota, so that got brought up. Everything that got brought up to me through this is are the people of the fire district, District Two, being double taxed for rescue services? Because the district levies taxes and then puts money into that truck and that. That service and then the county levies taxes for the rescue squads, so are they being double taxed? That was brought to my attention as well, so.
It's a bad point.
I have a couple of questions, so your solution to this would be. Thirty thousand would be the offer that we would give the fire district for the truck and the tools. Then the county would own that under the rescue umbrella. All of the protocol and the people that would operate this vehicle would be on your rescue roster.
Correct.
And you would be handling all of that, we would still work out an agreement to house it.
Correct.
And have access to it.
Correct, the fire district is willing for a time period, they didn't specify a length, but they are willing to continue to house the truck for us until we we have other options.
One thing you had mentioned was previous commissions turned over to Effingham Fire. Did the county previously own this truck and equipment?
Correct.
And then what was the purchase price from Effingham Fire to the county for this?
It was given to them.
It was given to them, so the county gave this same truck.
No, 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 a previous truck, it was.
Previous truck.
It was an old ambulance.
Okay.
Um, nineteen eighties ambulance, I'm sure Eric remembers it.
Yeah, it it was.
It was at the end of life.
Yes.
Okay, so we get them, but they've purchased.
They have since purchased a newer truck and newer tools.
Thank you.
The original.
Who have updated.
Correct.
Not what?
Good, good point, yeah, I didn't explain that one.
Nope, I just wanna make sure because.
I was, I had the same thoughts too, because I picked that up that, but it's.
I was just trying to wrap my brain, if we, the county historically gave it to them, why are we buying it back? But if it's not the same.
It's not the same truck and equipment, no, no, those were obsolete when they were donated. And I don't know in what timeframe exactly they updated, but since then they've updated the truck and the tools. Uh, the tools I do know were purchased in twenty fourteen. Because they purchased them alongside the tools that the county purchased from the same vendor at the same time for a little buying power. So I still have the original invoice from that.
I would say all of those agreements and everything have happened probably since. Twenty fourteen till now, because I had been on the fire district before that and we didn't, they didn't house the truck. Well, they didn't even have the building that they're in now, they couldn't have housed it and didn't.
Yeah, they didn't even have enough housing for their own apparatus at that point.
Right. So.
So you would pay for this out of your capital?
Unless somebody has a better option.
Okay.
Part of paying for your capital, I don't have a problem with because our money is already giving you so many. Updated purchases.
Our money has been a huge help.
You're so caught up to me in a lot of things that if you take a little bit of hit, have to wait no longer for something down the road.
Do we want to get? Everything all encompassing and do it at once, do we need to have? Memorandum of understanding and all of that and then. Do the purchase and stuff at that time? And to kind of make it all happen at once or?
I'd like I'd like an MOU on especially on housing it there because even if it's like a eight for two years or whatever, I mean, is it give you a timeframe? They they plan to reuse this space for something else or is there any?
They didn't give me a timeframe on that, they just said that they wouldn't essentially leave us out in the cold.
Yeah.
But but that there would have to be an end someday, I think they they have plans for for more apparatus or their own space.
If you're giving thirty thousand, they're gonna turn, I mean, upgrades, both things, they need a space.
Yeah, but I I really don't wanna speak for them on that, they just said they wouldn't, wouldn't kick us out.
So I think I I'm sitting in a position, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to give you authority to at least give the offer, cause they might say no, like.
Yeah, this this is an offer.
You know, they might tell us no, but also to your points of. All of the problems currently with the setup, we don't wanna keep going down the road of who's liability. Like if there's a call today, right? Like we wanna kind of keep things moving and then let them know that if if it's accepted. At payment, we need an MOU for leased space to your point, so we could keep it, keep it going forward.
So then it would then go onto county insurance that would all have a transfer and that goes with. The the equipment and everything, doesn't that have insurance on it?
Yes.
To cover. The people even using it.
Liability.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, uh, of that.
It's on that, it's just a matter of getting the V I N up to Michelle. And just listing the equipment on the roster as far as our our liability and providing care and rescue services that already exists.
So does that then the volunteer firefighters wouldn't be allowed to use that equipment?
I think we'd have to have something in the understanding where they would be allowed to or they could just join the rescue squad. And we'd have to hammer that out.
Okay, that's part of that agreement. Well, I was gonna say, or even if they didn't join, if they had, maybe if they had attended a training, they would have a certificate of that they could then.
Yeah, cause I wanna continue to work with them.
Yeah.
As long as you cover the liability piece on your end with.
Yeah.
Our equipment, then.
Yeah.
You're running the ship and.
Cause I have no problem, if I, that's one of the last things I would wanna try to use. And try to help somebody with and never have any training on it.
No, no, it's it's a technical aspect.
It's it's it takes some expertise, especially now with electric cars, that's interesting seeing. Now that you've got an electric car in a crash and you're gonna use the jaws of life and cut into a cable.
Yeah, we we definitely train on that.
Yeah, I that was already starting to be a thing when about the time I left the department and it's like, we're we're even on the fire department to put water on it.
Now, we're we're definitely adjusting our procedures.
Correct, you never know. Well, that's actually coming.
Yeah, I've seen some prototypes, so.
So. What about the? Maintenance steps, that will still be by your rescue squad?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would fall under our maintenance and and my captain, Captain Falk would be ultimately responsible for the maintenance on that.
Yeah, I'm okay with the offer and then just not discussing those terms of the MOU like.
Yeah, there needs to be something in his place.
It's a handshake, so it is.
Yeah.
Formalized. Yeah, that's it's a lot of cross pollinating going on there, you know what I mean, with all of the different.
And and the working relationship has been excellent, I don't want anybody to think this has come out of anything. Now, those those people have been great.
So you mentioned the gas powered hydraulics, but now, so then the next thing will be they'll need to upgrade those at some point.
Yeah, I do have that on my capital improvement plan. Uh, but yeah, at some point, the battery operated tools, um, I'm hoping we can get what I put on my plan. I think seven more years, I'd like to see, I'd like to see somewhere close to twenty years on a set of tools. You know, and they're well maintained.
Oh, so good, so that's not an imminent expense.
No, no.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, the the gas operated tools. They're gonna be bygones very, very quickly, uh, the city, we, the county has all gas operated tools, we have, we have new sets here. And then the fire district owns a set in the western portion of the county, but the city fire department has a battery operated set and it's incredibly impressive.
Yeah.
When the battery operated tools first came out, I was not all that impressed, they had a backpack that went with them and the power level was low and. But they can be set up and actually cutting into a vehicle by the time we even have our tools started. I mean, they're incredibly impressive and the the amount of maintenance goes down, the amount of, you know, you're not buying fluid, you're not buying gasoline, you're not dealing with stale gasoline, you're not. Dealing with gasoline additives.
Oozes break.
Yeah, it's it, they're just.
Won't start.
Won't start.
Right.
Yeah, which we we start ours at least weekly, so that that definitely eliminates that to a large degree, but. Yeah, I've been around city fires tools twice now on rescue situations and it it's clearly the path forward.
One more question while you're here.
Yes.
On a second note, so well, first of all, finish that, so. Um, I would look for a motion to allow our chief emergency services. The spending authority of thirty thousand out of his capital outlay for a rescue truck equipped with rescue equipment. Um, as presented.
To make an offer?
Yes.
Yeah. Second. I'll move.
I'll let you move.
No, I was going to, I hadn't said.
Okay, so.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
All right.
Uh, passes three to zero. We can see what comes of it. Uh, second thing, ARPA, we have an A E D. On our list that we were wondering the status update of that.
It is backordered.
Okay.
Um, I have spoke with Mark about that, we're gonna ask the company to go ahead and invoice it.
Okay.
So the money can be encumbered, but it is backordered and we do not have a delivery date, it's actually two A E Ds and those are both for the rescue trucks.
And both of them are the three thousand nine ninety nine.
Yeah.
Okay, so do you believe we could have an invoice next week, maybe?
I probably have an invoice today.
Okay.
My supply officer that deals with that is on duty today.
Awesome.
I talked to him about it Monday morning and he was gonna get a invoice.
Perfect.
We won't be here next week, so it'll be.
Oh, yes. But yeah, if you have it today, we're still here another two.
You've already grouped it.
Oh, so you just need the invoice, okay?
So.
Awesome, so we don't.
I'll try to get Mike or me to email you the invoice today.
And that'll come out of her. That'll come out of her. Okay, thank you.
I wish I had a, supply chains are still ridiculous, but.
I thought they were getting better a little bit.
It is better a little bit, but we still run into things like this and then the hurricanes, now we're shy on IV fluids and.
Oh, yeah, it's also a place they make them that got destroyed.
Mm-hmm, yeah, one of the plants, I want a Baxter Medical's plants was destroyed.
They're like major.
Yeah, and they, they produced a tremendous amount of the IV fluids for this country, so we're in rationing mode and the hospital is assisting us and we're assisting them and so doing the best we can with the short supplies. This new challenge, just different day, it's fine. We'll get through it. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
County counselor up.
I think there was something we could talk about at the end of the closing.
The Amberwell Agreement? Did you look at that one? You were looking, doing something with the HIPAA part of that?
Yeah, um, and I didn't talk to Jody about it, but I, I think that if you wanna go into executive session to talk in detail about it, we could, but the, uh, the HIPAA restriction that they have, I can see is too it's too much, um, that it prohibits us from using information, from using our own information that we give them. And so it's, I think it's too broad. And I, I think that was just on their part, trying to make sure that we're not using information that they give us, but it it's worded uh, very broadly, so. Um, but I, I haven't talked to Jody about that. Is, is that still, is she, is that still on the agenda today?
Uh, so it didn't make it on the agenda, but we.
No, she said to remove it for today.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Cuz we removed it last week, so I just wanted to follow up, but I had some highlighted things, so we can just chat more and add it back in in the future.
Oh, it was the uh, the remodeling and making the history court has requested that this room be designated as uh, a second courtroom. Um, there are a few times per month where there's, they need to have two hearings at the same time. And of course, we only have one. Well, we have two courtrooms currently, but with courtroom, with renovations coming for the small courtroom. Um, those will need to be moved and there's the, the primary concern is the recording system, because the court hearings have to be recorded for uh, purposes of appeal and for making a record, so they would uh, like to set, they would like to designate, like to have you designate this room as the backup courtroom for them. And allow them to place their recording equipment here. Uh, they understand that, uh, your meetings on Tuesday are a priority. Uh, now that's not to say that there couldn't be something that might come up that might be more important. I mean, we may have, you know. I can imagine a situation where there would be court that would be more important than our meeting, but for the most part, uh, just for, for run of the mill things, they understand that this room needs to be available for your, your work on Tuesdays. So that's more informational, I think, uh, as those renovations are going to take several months.
Okay, so do you need a motion for that? Or just an FYI?
Yeah, I think it's really just FYI.
Okay.
Unless, unless there's an objection to it.
There's not a, an objection, but they will need to coordinate their use of this room also, cuz there's other things that use it. So they need to coordinate with the clerk's office and request it for specific dates. Just so there's no, I mean, to be fair to everybody, they need to, to know what's, when it's expected to be used.
Paul certainly talked about that too. But that's all in.
Um, I have as a note to myself that we request an update from the ball fields on the construction and things that didn't happen. I don't know if that was something that we talked about during budget season when we said we were gonna maybe ask for an update later.
Okay.
I don't remember really why I wrote that, except for.
Yeah, I think we did ask for an update on uh, the work they're doing out here in North Carolina, so yeah.
So I, I don't know who wants to contact.
The clerk?
Okay, yeah, and they can schedule something just. Sometimes I'll do that note to myself.
Mm-hmm.
Good reminder.
Very much. Then I don't write enough to remember why I specifically.
You've got a lot done out there. I just don't know if there's something else coming or not. I just can't remember all the details.
To go along with that, it would be maybe kind of review where we're at on the financial part of, I mean, how much money's in the coffers and everything for any that needs to be used up by the time and, you know.
I think it would be nice to just have a recap on all the things, like when it sunsets exactly, cuz I feel like that question comes often and you know, most, most of us remember, but we don't have that definitive time, right? Like, I would like to have that conversation so anyone can, can know what's going on and when it's sunsetting and.
And that'd be best to do that all in one meeting at this, at the same time, just so.
Yeah.
Cuz it's be best to discuss it with them, so they're also aware of when this changes. So then at some point, well, they're gonna have to probably make some decisions on we're getting closer, it's like who's gonna own them, who's gonna maintain them. And that's, that's gonna be a big decision.
Also with that sales tax authority, just to understand, cuz our county is currently paying a quarter cent, so if we wanted or identified a different need outside of that, would that be something that we would wanna put on the ballot prior to sunset to to alter, to alter it, or does it have to sunset and then if it's completely a different need, then do a new one? Like I just not familiar with what that process looks like.
I think the uh, the language that was used, if you identified another sports or recreational need.
Okay.
I think you could just go ahead and, and as a board uh, decide to do that and that would extend the, that could extend the sales tax. Uh, when that was discussed before, previous versions of this board thought that uh, uh, we're not interested in, in doing something like that. Um, otherwise, I think it's just a political decision as to whether you uh, try to replace, replace it with uh, another tax on it. At the same time that this one expires. Or whether you, you wait or whether you have two of them at the same time. I think that's just on, on a political decision.
Okay, so outside of the political decision, does it make more sense? Like, just people don't like to pay more, right? But if we identify the need for a quarter cent, can you put that language on like, we are sunsetting the sports recreation quarter to now implement a?
Dedicated tax for.
Yes, something like as an example, like so that you don't lose something you have, right? It kind of like transitions and this is expiring and it will no longer go to the si- to the sports complex, but now they voted that it'll go to X or or is it cleaner to just let it sunset and then it just, things take so long sometimes that I didn't know if pre-planning this with what the need could be and have it voted on before it even gets here, right? Like.
That's typically what they do.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
That's good to know, just foresight like.
But again, that's a political decision. I mean, it's just.
Well, you gotta have a need.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's cleaner if you, especially if it has nothing to do with sports, if it's something completely different than you. Then you just let that one sunset. It has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
And here you have it, this is what we propose.
Yeah.
This is what it looks like.
Yeah.
But time it, but you're, what you're saying is like, vote, vote something new, like keep them separate. But have it start when this one sunsets.
Right.
Okay, no, it's just.
Yeah, cuz then you, cuz you could have a year overlap or something and I probably would not.
I heard part of that discussion last week about the uh, it wouldn't really affect the mill levy as much, but if it was a, if it was a road and bridge course, it sells tax, that would help the mill levy, correct? Cuz there's a lot of adware taxes for the bridge work. Am I doing that right, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, say that again.
Well, I'm just saying the quarter cent for the uh, posing head for it wouldn't help that much with the ambulance, because a lot of their money comes in from other sources. But it would help if you do like a road and bridge sales taxes. A lot of adware taxes go to road and bridge work in their budget.
Well, we.
So if you do quarter cent towards road and bridge, you could lower the mill. And still get the same money in.
There's a lot of adware for ambulance. There's plenty of.
No increases.
Oh, yeah, so.
Increase, that'll raise you back to where you're at.
Right. So.
Yeah, there's a lot of discussions to be had.
And probably, this is the kind of thing, you probably have somebody give advice that's actually well versed in all the strategies and you know. The budget book's complicated and now I'm starting to do this stuff, it gets real complicated. I should know this answer, cuz as legislature have to approve uh, the quarter cent new tax.
Yes, we had to get authority.
Oh, they changed a few things. I didn't think that changed.
Any other?
Oh, I'm have a uh, a webinar.
Oh, that's right.
Leaving.
You both do, right? Alright, I have um, a K Camp to certified voting delegate as Michelle Phillips. Um, so I would look for a motion to allow the chair to sign this K Camp certified voting delegate and alternate. The voting delegate or their alternate identified below agree to participate in the K Camp annual meeting that will be held on Tuesday, December third at five thirty at the Hyatt Regency in Wichita, Kansas. Michelle Phillips County Clerk is named voting. Mark Ziltner, Finance Director, is named al- alternate. So the motion to allow me to sign this.
So move, say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This is three to two.
Thank you.
Yep.
K Camp covered most of those costs or it's those terrible costs on us.
It's on us.
Okay.
Hey. Anything else? Any of the need for executive sessions? Look for a motion to approve this week's expenses as presented.
So move, second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass this three to you. We have two more hours, so, um, I don't see public comment, so I would just.
Is it worth having a session regarding the Amberwell information? Is it completely helpful or we're not there yet?
I'd like to hear yourself, don't have these half discussion.
Okay.
You have anything else for those? Okay, so I would just look for a motion to adjourn into workshop until one o'clock.
So move, say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass this.
Thought we were done.
So we had uh.
Okay. Okay, so we're back?
Yes.
Okay, so uh, we are back. This is going to be part two of the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, October twenty ninth. Uh, we had finished the agenda and business and we adjourned into workshop. However, we have um, public comment, so we have came back in um, for round two here. And I would invite um, one of you to come up to our chair here for a public comment.
Okay, I guess, uh, we're here, we are not from Atchison County.
Okay. What is your name, Aunt?
Um, Amy Hildebrandt.
Okay.
This is my husband, Chris Hildebrandt.
Okay. Welcome to our meeting.
The, the thing we're here about today is um, the sheriff's department. Um, it was suggested to us to come speak to you. Um, our son passed away April twenty eighth, um, in Atchison County.
My condolences.
Thank you. Um, we've been trying to get answers um, to questions that we have and have been for the most part unsuccessful. And we do not feel as if our concerns are being addressed. Um, we did meet with Jack and the detective back in August. Um, and they openly admitted that they did not do a full investigation. Um, the detective answered no to pretty much all of my questions except for two about doing a proper investigation. Um, we feel that it, that is unacceptable, not only for this case, but for future cases. Um, any death investigation and, and we did ask Jack if it was not the department's protocol to treat every death as if foul play was involved until proven otherwise. Um, we're not saying there was, but we did ask him that question and he said it should be. So basically, they did not do a full investigation. Um, the lack of communication, in our opinion, is unacceptable. When we leave voicemails, it takes days, if not weeks, to get calls back.
Basically, you gotta come back up here.
Yeah, and I understand short staffing, being busy, you know, you can't call back right immediately. And I came by here on Friday to get asked for a copy of a report and was told to have a seat. They would get it for me. Um, and then the other lady came to the window and said they were having trouble locating it. They had to call for help. It would be a few more minutes. So I waited and then, um, a gentleman came through the door to speak to me. Um, Lieutenant Wright. Very unprofessional and disrespectful. And I did suggest to the detective yesterday, I talked to him, that somebody pulled that camera footage from our conversation in the lobby and watch his behavior. The smirk on his face, the laughing and the comments that he made. I will not share the things that he said to me publicly, since this has been recorded. But if you would like to know what he said to me privately, I will tell you, and it was very disrespectful. For people who work with the community and the public, there should be a little more empathy and compassion with things that they say than how he acted.
Did you express his concern with the sheriff? Cuz that's really.
I left a voicemail yesterday for Jack and have not gotten a call back.
I, I recommend go over and meet with Jack because.
We've tried. We've called Jack before and don't always get a call back. And I left a voicemail for Jack yesterday and the detective called me.
So this falls outside of our.
Well, I, yeah, I was just letting him finish the public comment and
Well.
gonna explain that, um, thank you for coming and sharing your public comment. Um, we did not realize this had to do with another elected official. Uh, unfortunately, with elected officials, that has to be taken up with that elected official, as the Board of County Commission, um, do not have any authority over other elected officials, other than budgetary authority. Um, Mr. Henderson, I'm correct in stating that?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, um, and that's my county counselor, so, um, again, I'm very sorry for your loss and so if we do not feel like we're getting anywhere with the department, then what do we do?
Well, and the sheriff is elected by the voters of Atchison County every four years and so your, your remedy really is to uh, is to run or support a, a different candidate when that time comes. Now, if, if you've requested documents, for example, and uh, that are subject to. Uh that are subject to disclosure under the Kansas Open Records Act, then there's a remedy for that. To get the specific document or something that you asked for, but. I mean, that would be kind of beyond the scope of a hypothetical. How do we handle this type of?
I just kind of feel like we're getting. The runaround. Um. You know, there was some miscommunication on some things in the beginning that we just figured out in the last couple days. And it I guess it's just frustrating on our part that. You know, our concerns and the requests we've made are just, we feel like they're just not being taken seriously. And we've been very patient because we know it takes time. Um and they have other things to do. But after Friday evening, when I spoke to Lieutenant Wright, that was the icing on the cake.
And I would encourage you to go um speak to Sheriff Lori and explain those things as well, um as he's the. You know, in charge of all of the folks that you've been talking to, so he can be made aware of those as well. Okay.
We'll see if he's home.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Again, sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you. So I would look for a motion to recess uh into workshop and um and then we'll come back in. At one o'clock to close in case we have anyone else show up for public comment.
So move.
Okay.
Say it.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye, passes three to zero. Alright, we are back in open session and um. Looking for a motion to adjourn at one oh nine P M.
Also move.
All second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. We are now adjourned, one oh nine.